The residents of District Five. We've got two action items today. Before we get started, why don't we go ahead and do a round of introductions of council members? And I'm gonna start to my right because you're so sad over yourself.
I'm all by myself. Yes. Hi, everyone. Sedenna Gonzalez-Gutierrez, one of your council members at large.
Good morning. Paul Cashman, South Denver, District Six.
Good morning, Darrell Watson, Fine District Nine.
Good morning. Amanda Sandoval, Northeast Denver District One.
Good morning. Diana Romero-Campbell, Southeast Denver District Four.
And I'm gonna talk really slowly so that Councilmember L. B. Dreskin can get here.
Good morning, everyone. We are back on your screens today with the Excel Franchise Agreement, this time with an action item that we want you to move forward. And you want me to introduce?
Yeah, before you get started, why don't you guys introduce yourselves?
Yep. Okay, so I am Cindy Patton. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Dottie. You wanna introduce yourself?
I'm for Deputy Chief Projects Officer in the Mayor's Office.
And Grace Lopez Ramirez. I do local government and community affairs for Excel Energy here in the city and county of Denver.
All right, so we are back to talk about the Excel Energy Franchise Agreement that expires at the end of next year. And we do have an action item today that we would like you to move forward. So, a quick refresher for those of you around the table, or for those tuning in for the first time, we were at Budget and Policy a couple weeks ago. I'm gonna guide you through all of the overview of the franchise agreement and the significant benefits that the city of Denver stands to leverage upon voter approval of this newly negotiated draft agreement. But first, our goals here today are to move towards budget referral and making, or excuse me, ballot referral, and make sure that everyone's comfortable with that. So, we're going to go through a similar agenda. Faithful viewers will remember us from that Budget and Policy Committee a few weeks ago, but we're gonna be a little bit more streamlined this time and cover the purpose of the franchise agreement, its goals, its scope, a little more clarity around its purpose, and why it's one of the most important right-of-way agreements that we have on the books to not only the city of Denver, but all the partners that you see visualized here up on this graphic. So, we're gonna cover the overview of the agreement, what it includes, what it doesn't include, the goals of the agreement, how it was negotiated, the benefits that we expect to see for Denverites, and our timeline and next steps. So, the franchise is basically a legal authorization that's granted to a utility, in this case, Excel, and that is to operate and use the public right-of-way to deliver services. And in this case, it's gas, electricity, et cetera. It's a regulated relationship that basically grants Excel the ability to operate in public spaces, like installing and maintaining, repairing facilities for Denverites every single day. It's kinda like a fast-rued franchise where you have specific terms within which you have to operate, but this is about public infrastructure and utility regulation. It's not about hamburgers. I'm trying to work in new material to keep this fresh for you guys. Additionally, it's very important to keep in mind that this agreement does not set utility rates. Utility rates are governed by the PUC. They work to make sure that those are fair and reasonable, and they do approve those rates through term.
Really quickly, before you keep going, for those watching at home, can you just not use acronyms or explain the acronym? So, what is the PUC?
I'm sorry, and I even wrote it out fully. And my brain took over. It's the Public Utilities Commission. Thank you for the reminder. I will also mention that Excel has been a partner of the city in some way, shape, or form for 150 years through different names, most recently Excel. But this agreement has existed really without interruption, guiding our partnership together in the right-of-way. So, we are coming up on the end of a 20-year term, which is why you see me here today, and that does expire in December of 2026. It is so, so important that we move this franchise forward for the success of the city's capital maintenance and improvement programs. We wanna get ahead of the curve. That's why we're here so early. So, this is all set and ready to go and in place by January 1st, 2027. So, now, today, after hours and hours of internal staff conversations, speaking at the negotiation table, briefings with you and your colleagues, we're really pleased with our draft agreement and what Denverites stand to gain. So, we're gonna try and move this towards to ballot referral so we can get this done in November in 2025. But why should you feel like we are getting a great deal? Well, we are, and I wanna tell you why. We knew this would be a tough negotiation this time around because the benefits of our existing franchise are that good. They are unparalleled in the world of franchise agreements, and they're organized as follows currently. This is our existing agreement. You have the meat of the document, that's the franchise agreement itself. This is what the voters vote on. This is where that re-utility relocate, excuse me, re-utility relocation clause lives. And that's where Excel pays to relocate their infrastructure for public projects. This could be a bridge project, a street reconstruction project, a transit project, 16th Street Reconstruction, streetscaping, any of those things. And it also requires Excel to pay the city a franchise fee of 3% that go into our general fund. And so, these, between the relocation package and the benefit that we see there that holds project budgets and the city budget harmless for that work, in addition to the franchise fee, we are seeing incredible benefits today. We also get to leverage a 1% set aside for undergrounding that is also included in this section of the agreement. The operating agreement itself covers more of the nitty-gritty, day-to-day work around streetlights, city facilities, billing technicalities, payment agreements for service. The street lighting agreement talks about coordination on those repairs. All streetlights in the city of Denver, with the majority of streetlights in the city of Denver, more than 15,000 are owned and maintained every day by Excel, so this governs that relationship. And those are maintained every day to keep Denverites safe. And it also includes the operating agreement, the Denver for Den, the Denver International Airport, and that offers the same relocation benefit to that property at Den. Today, it includes the Low Income Energy Assistance and Energy Conservation Agreement, which was a unique part of the last 20-year term. We'll talk a little bit more about that, and we covered that quite a bit in the last committee update. And then the Energy Future Collaboration Memorandum of Understanding. This is not really part of the formal franchise agreement. It was approved in 2018, but it's definitely the place where we have a documented, shared vision for the future and how we want to achieve that. So, we joked at the beginning of this process that a successful renegotiated franchise agreement would look very similar to what it does today, and that seems odd on its face because you always wanna get more. But we knew that we had truly one of the best versions for Denver already, and it would take a lot for us to hold on to those benefits in the same way. In the 20 years since our last negotiation, Excel has moved to a more templated franchise agreement with cities that they've negotiated with more recently, and we understandably knew that they were gonna try and fit us into that mold because it was the mold that was now common. But to the credit of the Mayor's Office and the City Attorney's Office, who sat and spent hours and hours at that negotiation table, they really worked diligently to hold on to the full, undiluted benefit for that relocation benefit, and then make sure that it extended not only to all of our city property, including all of Den, as well as our government agency partners. So, we really wanted to, in this time around, retain those right-of-way benefits, including that relocation and franchise fee benefit, and then preserve that strong definition of the public projects, going back to that first graphic on the Agenda page, that shows that all of our agency partners could also take part in that benefit for relocation. We wanted to strengthen partnerships and enhance service to Denverites, which is really about getting better at what we do together, coordinating better, sharing information, getting more responsive faster so that we could reflect the demands of today's, today's city, modern city, and then reflect the modern energy conservation that comes along with that and articulate that better, since that's, we do a much better job articulating that today than we did 20 years ago. And then finally, accelerating our renewable energy transition and establishing a new group that really takes that Energy Future MOU and creates a forum to discuss and put practicality around how we actually achieve those things day-to-day with things that are coming up, and make sure that we have representation that can keep that conversation moving quickly to advance that clean energy future and infrastructure. So, you'll see on the right, all of the main benefits that I want everyone to leave this room, being able to quote, if I trap you in an elevator, you know that we have preserved the utility relocation benefit for all of the city property, as well as all of Den. We have generated over, this was last, this current agreement has generated over $30 million a year for Denver's general fund. That's not earmarked for a particular program. It just goes into the general fund and is allocated as part of the budget process annually. And then we have this undergrounding fee, the 1% that generates over $10 million a year to underground transmission lines. So, we did streamline the framework, too. We felt like there were too many documents, and this was the chance for us to streamline those things. So, you will see the organization a little bit different. Tried to come up with a graphic to make that make sense. We combined the franchise agreement with the Denver Operating Agreement and the streetlighting agreement. So, those are what is now the franchise agreement that will be voted on, approved by, referred to the ballot, voted on by voters, and then finally approved by the PUC. You have the Denver International Airport Operating Agreement that will stand alone. That makes sense because the airport is governed also by FAA and things that don't really apply to the city at large, so it makes sense to pull that out separately. And also articulate, again, that this franchise covers the entire airport property, even the property that extends into Adams County. And then finally, the creation of the Development Innovation Group, or the Denver DIG, is what we're calling it. So, this is really where that Energy Future MOU turns to practice and conversation and forward movement towards the energy partnerships, load forecasting, planning, thinking about the future, and thinking about how we get ahead of all of the development needs that we know are coming across the city, and getting better at data and information sharing as we benchmark towards those goals. And then finally, the Low Income Energy Assistance and Conservation Clause, that was really only about $200,000 every year over the course of 20 years. We talked quite a bit in the last Budget and Policy Committee about how Excel's programs have really exceeded that spending, and Grace is here, and she can talk a little bit more about that. We're not gonna go into quite that detail, so that will really be taken over by Excel and the Public Utilities Commission to oversee those utility payment and efficiency programs. So, our timeline is as follows. We are here July 8th at Finance and Governance Committee with the action item to move this forward to council, so we can move this to the ballot in November. First reading will be scheduled for July 14th with a second reading on July 21st, and that will give us plenty of time. To also start, Excel will start a campaign, and Grace can talk a little bit more about that. We have outreach programs and activities planned all summer and into the fall through the Excel Energy Red Truck Program, where we bring those resources into communities and let people know not only what the franchise is about, but what we can do with billing, any questions that they may have about their service, complaints or suggestions, that they're right there in the community with them. And then, of course, any opportunities that you all may have in your communities through getting information out on social media, your social media channels, your newsletters, or other meetings. We're happy to do that as well. We've also stood up a website on the Denver Gov. page that has information about this franchise relationship that's never existed before. This has been an absolute back black box that we really wanna decode for folks because it is so important, and it is so centered around the success of our right-of-way projects and capital improvements moving forward because it truly leverages the city budget so we can spend that money on the projects, and Excel will pay to move those utilities. It's truly, truly helpful for us. And then in the fall, we hope for a successful voter approval at the November election, and then it will go on its way to the Public Utilities Commission, which will give that final approval. And then we'll just wait for January 1st, 2027, and we'll be ready to go. So, this is what that approval process looks like in the actual process of it all. The franchise agreement itself, that first box that we covered in that breakdown slide, will require council approval to get it on to the ballot, public voter approval, and then the PUC approval, Public Utility Commission approval. You've got the ordinance number there. The Denver International Operating Agreement, we had a question about this from Councilman Flynn last time, that only requires council approval, so that will not be something that the voters vote on. And you see the ordinance there. So, in the time that we have, the couple weeks that have passed since we were here last at Budget and Policy, we have heard a lot of ideas about how to leverage the franchise to unlock more in the climate protection space. But I wanna be clear that the franchise itself is a right-of-way agreement, and it doesn't exist to govern Excel's energy plans. That is why we created the Denver D-DIG, the Innovation Group, to really create a place and an on-ramp for those discussions to have meaningful conversation and move forward. And then we also obviously have Casser's leadership to advance climate goals within the city. But we've heard a lot of ideas about other equity funds and their relationship to utility providers, and one that we heard a lot about was San Diego. So, we just wanted to put out some information. We did some research, and we thought we'd do a quick comparison with Denver and show that we're really getting, we really have a great setup here today. So, you'll see the San Diego Climate Equity Fund. This was not created by San Diego Gas and Electric. I think that's a misnomer. It was actually created by the San Diego City Council in 2021. It's not funded by shareholders or ratepayer revenues. It's really funded by the city. So, to further their goals, they had articulated in an action plan in 2015, and they had a ballot measure, I believe, that also required cities to add environmental justice elements. They created this fund, and it's funded by annual revenue from Transnet, which is basically a fund for transportation projects, a percent of, 1% of total annual revenue from the gas tax, 10% of general fund revenue received through annual gas and electric franchise fees, and any additional revenue that the city sets aside specifically for that fund. So, when you look at that fund and compare it to our fund, we have, they have about $11 million a year annually. Well, this was in 2024, so these are actuals. And then we were at 50 million in revenues, so with a much smaller population. So, we actually have a great setup here, and our purpose is similar, but they are looking at equitable distribution of public facilities and services, and we're looking at cutting gas emissions and supporting vulnerable communities to adapt to climate change. So, you can see the difference in the allowable uses, but we thought this might be helpful to show that we're really set up well. We have a good amount of funding to put towards this that the city has. And I know a lot of questions also came about, well, what are the, what are the shareholders doing at Excel? So, I'm gonna ask Grace to talk a little bit more about what current programs they have that are moving forward through their foundation.
Yeah, I think last time at Budget and Policy, we talked a little bit about our partnership with Energy Outreach Colorado and the over $8 million that we spent in the city and county of Denver last year in our partnership with them, and that's in addition to the 50 million that the Climate Protection Fund brings to the city and county of Denver. So, separately, we do have our foundation dollars that we invest in across the state, across our service territory. This slide actually addresses our, our funding across our eight states, 4.6 million, and you can see how we break that down. We have three different groups that we, three different giving areas that we give in. If you can go to the next slide, please. See, that was 4.6 million across eight states. We, here in Colorado, are at 1.4 million, so that's second only to Minnesota, and that's again across the service territory, so across the state of Colorado. But that is, that goes out to 82 nonprofits, the vast majority of which are based here in the city and county of Denver. Over 60 of them, of those 82, are based here in Denver. Some of them do only work here in the city and county of Denver, but some of them do work statewide, but again, they're based here in the city and county of Denver. And you can see, that's an average grant of $17,000 per nonprofit. So, that's the breakdown from our stakeholder dollars that we, we spend in, through the foundation.
There's one more here. Is that the same?
It's the same one. This one breaks down a little bit more what we do here in Colorado with that 1.4 million. You can see, we focus on STEM career pathways, environmental sustainability, and community vitality. So, those are our three main buckets. Really, environmental sustainability, a lot of that goes to things like Greenway Foundation and nonprofits that are looking at environmental justice work.
Thanks. So, I, I think what we're trying to communicate here is we're really pleased with the way that the draft negotiation has landed, where it's landed in terms of the benefits that we're retaining and preserving for Denverites moving forward in the next 20 years, and we also feel like we have a great setup through our Climate Protection Fund that is much bigger than some comparables that we can devote here in Denver. And then we've got a really great partner who has evidence of investing back into our nonprofits, not only in the state, but in Denver. Every year, we can get better. I think every year, we're working on our relationship to get more streamlined and more efficient with Excel so we can deliver those services so that people feel them out their front doors. And so, I think this is gonna be really great groundwork for us to continue in that work. So, this is also new. This is the draft ballot referral language that you will see. I, should I read it? Okay, I will read it. Shall the city and county of Denver approve the terms of a 20-year franchise contract starting January 1st, 2027 with Public Service Company of Colorado, Excel Energy, to continue its program for undergrounding overhead electrical lines, maintaining infrastructure safety, and partnering with the city for emergency management coordination, and to require that Excel Energy continue to pay the city for reasonable use of public right-of-way and other city property necessary to provide safe and reliable utility services for the benefit of the city, its residents, and its businesses? So, this is the question we would like to leave you, the draft language, leave you with as we go into questions about anything we covered here. We've got some more resources. I know many of you have had questions, and we'd love to answer them to make sure we're ready to go to the full council consideration.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Producer, can you please take down the slides for us? Because this is, uh, hold on, let me go back up. Yes, we have public comment before we, thank you. I'm so organized today.
Happy.
All right, so, we've got two people signed up for public comment. We have 15 minutes set aside. For those watching at home, we have two minutes of public comment per speaker. So, I'm gonna call our two speakers, and then since we'll have a little bit of extra time, if there's anyone else in the room who wants to, who didn't get a chance to sign up but would like to come and speak, you know, I'll give you an opportunity to do that. I know our signups can sometimes be confusing. So, we're gonna start with Katie Lunsford. And yep, you just go to the microphone right here. Please introduce yourself for the record, and then we'll go ahead and time you on our end. Is there gonna be a timer up on the screen? For those at home, I'm asking the producer. Standby.
Shaking her head, no.
Shaking your head, no. Okay, so, I'm gonna give you like a wave when you have 30 seconds left, just to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
Good morning. My name is Katie Lunsford. I am a resident of Central Park, and I live in District Eight and a member of Augustana Lutheran Church. In addition to being a community leader with Together Colorado, I volunteer multiple times a month with Month Metro Carrying. I see firsthand our neighbors who are struggling in our great city due to the lack of affordability. I have three points to make. First, when we heard, we have heard repeatedly affordability is a top concern of the mayor and our city council members. I am concerned this franchise agreement does not adequately address affordability, especially how it impacts our lower-income and fixed-income neighbors. In the 2006 franchise agreement, resources were allocated for low-income assistance, municipal solar power projects, energy-efficient and low, for low-income households and nonprofit properties. Has this provided, this has provided some relief. Has there been any research to determine what was put in place in the 2006 agreement actually helped our neighbors? With the passage of the big, beautiful bill, actually the big, ugly bill, last week and cuts to our safety net programs, our lower-income and fixed-income neighbors will be struggling even more to meet basic needs. How will this new agreement address those concerns? We are a caring community who cares about all our neighbors. This agreement could be an example that raises that bar for the rest of the state, just like it did in 2006, how to place our low-income and fixed-income community members on solid ground. Point two, why is Denver entering a 20-year agreement? What is the evaluation?
30 seconds.
Oh, evaluation criteria and assessments that will allow this city to determine that Excel is performing to its standards, and these assessments will ensure that Denver is achieving a laid-out, what has been laid out and would hold Excel accountable. It also appears this, this agreement has been crafted with no community input and no other voices at the table. We encourage you to open it up to allow for community input on this.
That's time. Great, thank you. Our next speaker who's signed up is, hang on, let me look at my notes here, Thomas Wyler.
Greetings, council members. My name is Thomas Wyler. I live in Denver, District Seven, and I'm on staff with Together Colorado. First, I want to acknowledge and thank the work that's gone into everything here, from Dottie to Casser and the mayor's team. But I'm here today to offer a different perspective. 20 years ago was the last time we had an opportunity to renegotiate the Excel franchise. A once-in-a-generation opportunity. My six-year-old, 26 by the time this thing expires, the Denver City Council and Mayor Hickmuber at the time included in 2006 a companion agreement. They called it the Energy Agreement that allowed the city to become a national leader, both in terms of clean energy investments, accelerating our progress to climate goals, but also including resources for low-income assistance, municipal solar, et cetera. Denver's Low Income Assistance Program went on to become a model for the state and the PUC, as was asserted today in the presentation. Does the state have it handled, though? I would challenge council to question this. Most residents that we connect with are struggling to keep up with their bills and would not agree that the existing programs are doing enough, let alone for those working families and those unfixed incomes. This may have been the gold standard agreement 20 years ago, but what community benefits does it provide the average Denverite struggling to make ends meet today? The city has an opportunity to remind Excel, as an investor-owned, for-profit utility that makes over $1 billion a year in revenue from Denver alone, that we, the people, provide Excel an amazing business opportunity, captive customers, barriers to any other providers, a monopoly, almost guaranteed recovery of all of its expenses, plus profit and earnings, and we ask very little from this special business arrangement. But we think that this is an ideal time to remind Excel what they get for having us as captive customers. The big-ticket benefit to the city in this monopoly is a 3% fee that goes to the general fund and a 1% fee that goes to underground power lines.
That's your time.
Why set the bar there? Why not ask for another 4%? Why not ask for more funding?
That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have anyone else who has turned out to speak? Yes, why don't you come up?
This is very unprone, too. I am Lori Kagan from the Lowry Neighborhood. I'm a member of Councilwoman Sawyer's district. I'm also with Together Colorado. What the agreement, what the ballot member, what the ballot item says does not tell the whole story. It implies that we have a complete agreement with Excel, and as I understand it, we have an agreement for rights of way, a very narrow agreement, and they say the details will be worked out later. We are giving away all of our leverage for a 20-year commitment to a company that already does not keep its promises, especially to low-income people. And I would implore you to not put this ballot measure forward at this time, to hold Excel to the fire, to hold their feet to the fire, and work out all of the details, and ask for more public benefit for all that they're getting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Ackerman, also from Together Colorado, which is surprising here to say today. I'm just gonna finish some of Thomas's remarks here that we've all worked on together, but the big-ticket benefit to the city in this monopoly is a 3% fee that goes to the general fund and a 1% fee that goes to underground power lines. Who set the bar there that in exchange for a monopoly zero-risk business venture, we would like 4% back? Bold leadership like you guys would be using your leverage to demand an equivalent 4% to go to things like low and working-class utility relief, innovative climate resilience programs, and other innovative things that will come from the community that no one has asked what they think. And if we, our Climate Protection Fund is actually a sales tax that we passed. It's not coming from Excel. We would like to hold space for those who voted for you, demand that the mayor's team follow the lead of our prior council, and develop a companion agreement to the Excel franchise that centers environmental justice and economic relief for those who most need it. This should include a robust public engagement. This is a negotiation time, a negotiation point. Yesterday, we, along with our organizational partners, submitted a letter in which new council highlights the gaps in the process to date and some policy ideas regarding how other cities are using franchise agreements to win real battles, real benefits for the communities. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, then we will move on to council member questions. First up is Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, committee chair, and thank you so much to the city and to Excel for your due diligence and working on this very complex franchise agreement. In the many briefings that Excel and, of ahead with Excel and with the city, I've brought forward questions around environmental justice, similarly to what the folks from Together Colorado brought forward. On June 29th, there was an article in the Denver Post on coal ash removal, removal in the city and county boulder. In the Excel the City and County of Boulder. In the, Excel volunteered to remove coal ash from a former coal plant that was seeping into the groundwater. I have two questions specific to an agreement, to the franchise agreement that speaks to environmental justice, that can be inclusive of the good work that's being done by Excel in Boulder, and now possibly move towards good work to be done with the coal plants, former coal plants that are decommissioned in Denver and one in Adams County, that possibly has the same level of seepage into groundwater. My ask will be around what are the possibilities, and has this been a part of the negotiations? My first question from Excel would be, in your process with this negotiated franchise agreement, have you considered looking at the same work you're doing in Boulder, removing coal ash, remediating it for common use so that it's not negatively impacting communities in Boulder? Have you considered similar agreements with the city during this franchise agreement for the two plants that are in Denver? The one is in Council District Seven, then one that's in Adams County, which is just adjacent to us. Then I have a similar question to the administration as to my curiosity as to whether they're negotiating a separate agreement to be attached to franchise agreement that asks for those things because I think it is necessary. Grace?
I would say there is an environmental provision within the franchise, but it doesn't directly address that. We, as Excel Energy, have proactively cleaned up our sites within the City and County of Denver, both Arapahoe and District Seven, but also the Zuni Plant in District Three. That's construction work we've been doing on the South Parcel for several years. So that was proactive on our part. It is not part of the agreement currently.
For the administration, because I know there are other folks in a queue, I want to be very specific. There are two plants, the one in Adams County, because I asked Shannon, I got back late Sunday from vacation, sent an email out, got a response last night, so this is why I'm asking this now. There are two plants, the one in District Seven and the one in Adams County. Are there any, is there a process currently where Excel is voluntarily cleaning those? And if not, is there an opportunity for an agreement attached to the franchise agreement requiring that step? Because once again, environmental justice, even if it's not identified within the franchise agreement, there is an opportunity to have additional agreements attached to the franchise agreement stating environmental justice ask. And this is one of the asks from my office. So can you elaborate, Shannon?
I'll try to elaborate. I mean, I was not aware of this issue until last Sunday night. So this is like new to me, but I read the article and immediately brought it to other members of the administration to talk about, you know, what we might be able to do here. As you know, from reading the franchise agreement, this doesn't fit neatly into the franchise terms itself. And so any sort of agreement between the city and Excel to move forward with greater remediation of those two sites would probably, and then the D-Dig, which we've talked about a little bit, is a, you know, it creates for, a forum for discussion and planning purposes of things going forward, but it doesn't like set exact requirements to do anything. And so if there were to be an agreement between the city and Excel to do further remediation or beneficial reuse of the coal ash at these sites, that would presumably be a separate, different agreement. I don't know if Chuck Solomon or John McGrath would like to speak a little bit to, you know, what that agreement might look like and what the requirements might be of approving it.
Yes.
Yeah, John McGrath, the city attorney's office. So there was a lot of discussion of environmental liabilities in general, and the agreement essentially leaves in place all of federal and state regulations, laws, et cetera, for each party. One of the things to keep in mind is that while Excel owns environmentally impacted properties, the city also owns environmentally impacted properties. And in the discussions, Excel was very keen to impose kind of high-level, open-ended requirements on the city to give them clean corridors and streets and other property where they are doing work. So to me, there's kind of two sides to this. We did spend a lot of time discussing the topic in general. We have signed a memorandum of understanding. It's sort of a cooperation agreement. It's opening the dialogue between both parties. Who can, when Excel is doing a project and they encounter something that on city property, we will have a process to address that. Similarly, the city will have a process to address concerns like yours.
John, I appreciate that, Madam Chair. I'll end with this. What I'm asking for specifically is not an open-ended memorandum of understanding. Coal ash is seeping into the groundwater in Boulder. Similarly, on the plants in Denver, that may be happening. We have a once-in-a-lifetime 20-year agreement. What I'm asking from the administration, prior to the two-week process that we're going through City Council, is for us to have an ironclad declaration communication agreement stating similarly to what they're doing in Boulder that they do in Denver. I appreciate the review, sir, as the, as an attorney, what you're discussing, what I'm directly asking of Shannon and the administration in order for District Nine to be supportive of this. I need something clearly delineating an agreement attached to the franchise. This is specific, and this is being done in Boulder. It should be quick to make that decision because you already have the framework. So that is what I'm asking for, and I'm encouraging your team to please communicate back how that's possible. I've shared my questions with council president, and I will continue having dialogue with both you and Excel on this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Parity.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. So I've been trying to track the process of these negotiations. I know they only concluded really recently, but it took me until sometime between the last meeting and this meeting to really understand why we had moved away from some of the terms of the 2006 agreement where Excel was being asked to directly invest into relief for low-income ratepayers here in Denver. And I understand that there was a change where, you know, now the PUC can require Excel to do some of that and does require Excel to do some of that. I also understand that those state law provisions are almost entirely passed on to ratepayers. And to me, the existence of some new state requirements, I don't, to me, I don't see why we would then not still try to negotiate some of that additional relief for Denver ratepayers, you know, given the economic precarity that we're seeing that Together Colorado has sort of highlighted today. So I just, I feel like that's unfortunate that we kind of just said, well, we're, you know, we're doing that through the PUC, through rate increases for other consumers, because that's not something that Excel itself is paying for from profit. And I also think that the other really big missed opportunity, in addition to some of what the District Nine members highlighting, is around data sharing. Like, there is so much that we could do differently if we had really clear provisions around data for different kinds of customer groups, so that we could figure out if we're, you know, for example, restaurants tend to have spikes in their energy usage. Could we smooth that out for them and how their charge rates? Could we make that a little more tailored to different kinds of consumers that have specific needs throughout the city? But we can't do that without data access. And then similarly, yeah, I just, I just have an issue that we stepped away from looking at the entirety of our relationship with Excel. Because Excel is a monopoly, we don't have any other way to achieve some of these specific benefits if we take them out of the franchise agreement. And so it's just really strange to me that we've deferred them to this group that doesn't have any teeth instead of negotiating them clearly alongside the other pieces of the relationship. So the answer that we were only trying to negotiate the right-of-way just doesn't, I just don't, I guess I just don't agree with that as a decision because of the importance of the utility to the well-being of the city across so many different aspects. That being as it may, we have, you know, we have a short ask to the ballot here. And of course, this, I understand this is the only piece that has to go to the ballot. And so I'm sharing the ask that we look really seriously at negotiating a brief and clear side agreement that addresses data sharing, relief for low-income consumers at, you know, something above the levels in the 2006 agreement, which was not a large amount of money, and then some of the remediation that certain neighborhoods may be looking for. I think that could be accomplished in, you know, the amount of time we have to get this through council. And I would feel a lot better about voting it through to the ballot if I knew that we were getting some of those other benefits. I just don't, you know, I understand that the city has a need for a franchise agreement, but I also understand that Excel relies on that relationship and, you know, has a preference for a franchise agreement as well. So I don't, I don't love that we've pushed aside all these other really important needs. Yeah, I guess it's not a question. I guess that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Alvedres.
Thank you so much. I definitely echo my colleagues, both Councilwoman Watson and Councilwoman Parity's concern. And something that I've been hearing from community when they hear that this is going to be in the ballot in November is when did we get to put in any input? And so has there been any community input or conversations in community about their needs and desires in this agreement, since they're the ones creating this opportunity for Excel?
So no, the negotiation was not done with community input. Typically, in negotiations, it's between the city and, you know, Excel. We are doing community engagement now through the summer, as was relayed in the slide deck. And we are open to doing presentations before registered neighborhood organizations and anyone who's interested. But typically in negotiations, my understanding, and this is the first one I've ever negotiated since, you know, I was in high school when the last one passed, I understand that that's typical. I don't know if the city would like to respond to it.
Yeah, well, I think I would just add, and I don't want to be a broken record, but this is a right-of-way agreement, and we are trying to preserve the benefits that were already there. So we're trying to hold true to maintaining especially that relocation benefit. And I think because we want to leverage the ability to build the projects that folks, that we hear from folks in our engagement processes want to build and leverage our budgets to be able to do more of those, and that has been incredibly constrained. And so if we were to lose this, or dilute the relocation benefit, they would be wildly impacted. I'm with Grace. I think our understanding is that this is, the negotiation table has always been between the two entities for this. But that doesn't mean that there's not a lot of opportunity now to be able to inform how we're getting out and telling people about Excel, the benefits that are there. I hear Councilwoman Parity's points about making sure there's education around what the reinvestment back into the community is. And I think that is a black box. That is not daylight really in a great way, and we have a lot of work to do there.
I also would add, and I think that, you know, unfortunately, this slide deck didn't include the slide that talked about the $8.3 million that we invested in the City and County of Denver in 2024 alone. In, you know, over $5 million of that was in the bill payment assistance. There was energy efficiency work done with, you know, single-family homes, with multifamily homes, the community solar garden work that we do, over $300,000. So that $8.3 million, we, you know, part of our work at the dig and part of our work through our red truck program, which we also didn't have the opportunity to speak about today, is signing people up. It's making sure that we're coordinating well with our community, with our neighborhoods, so that our red truck goes out into neighborhoods and is signing people up for those programs, right? I hear from, you know, the community folks in the room as far as them feeling, you know, the community feeling the pinch of affordability in the City and County of Denver, and we definitely recognize and understand that and are here to help, here to sign folks up to bill payment assistance programs or to leave or whatever, however we can be helpful to them. I want to reiterate that this franchise agreement is, does not set rates, but the Public Utilities Commission will need to approve the franchise. And given that they already have approved bill payment assistance and energy efficiency programs for our low-income customers, you know, any additional dollars towards that just for the City and County of Denver in their franchise may not have been approved by the Public Utilities Commission, given that they've already approved this partnership we have with the Energy Outreach Colorado, and knowing the foundation dollars, $1.4 million that we already spend annually across the state, again, the majority of which, almost $1 million, going here in the City and County of Denver.
Thank you. I appreciate the $8.3 million and the money that Excel has put into community and all of those efforts. I think my concern is that we don't have these agreements in writing, and just because that happened last year, it doesn't speak to what's happening this year or next year. And when we look back and see that there was a companion agreement and see that we don't have one now, it is a concern. And to say that a lot of these things will be worked on by this group, what's the name of the group?
It's the D-Dig, but in fact...
D-Dig? What does that sound for?
Denver Development Innovation Group. I'd like to let you finish, but I have a little bit of comment.
Go ahead.
Just, just that, that it's not, that was my concern originally. It's like, oh, you gave a lot of money last year, but where is it in writing that you're going to keep doing it? And a lot of that is because it is in state statute now and Public Utilities Commission policy, and those amounts aren't capped. So part of what has happened here is that there are a number of customers throughout Denver who would qualify, for example, for the bill payment assistance, that are not yet aware of the bill payment assistance. And so part of what Excel and Dottie in their outreach want to do and should be doing is making more potential beneficiaries aware of those programs so that they can take advantage of them. And that's something that can happen through, you know, council events and newsletters and so forth as well.
Yeah, communication is always a struggle, and that's why I feel like we did miss a step in getting community engagement in that negotiation process, because at the end of the day, we need the voters' buy-in. And it doesn't seem like we have that from the conversations that I'm having in community, and people are shocked that it's even coming to the ballot now. And so I will just share that concern. And then another question is, did we explore a shorter amount of time? I know there has been questions.
The term of the agreement?
Right.
We did. It's interesting, because I've sort of heard that from several people, like, why don't you do a shorter one so that you can go back in in 10 years and get a better agreement? My absolute belief is that the longer agreement acts in Denver's favor, not Excel's, because we've negotiated benefits that go above and beyond what has happened with other municipalities. And then where we started on this negotiation over a year ago was, we're going to cut you back to like what all the other municipalities have. And my absolute expectation is that you come back in 10 years and they will do that again. And you have to sort of build it back up again and get the benefits for the airport and get the benefits for the other kinds of public projects that defray and reduce the costs of other projects. And so what we're locking in here isn't, I know a lot of people have sort of talked about a lot of goals from Excel. What we're locking in here aren't, are the kinds of things that happen in a right-of-way agreement. And, and those, I believe, absolutely benefit us. They're, they're different. They go above and beyond what other municipalities have achieved, based on arguments that we were able to make that we're just differently situated. We're a bigger, more complex municipality. We have an international airport, which ratepayers all over the state need. If you have to come back in 10 years and make those same arguments again, you might, you might drop a few balls. And so I believe locking those in for 20 years is better than locking them in for 10 years, but I can understand the question. We do have termination provisions.
Exactly. That's where I was going. We talked about this last time. I didn't mention them this time, but if for any reason we needed to exit the agreement, we can do so.
Yeah, we can buy out.
I, what I'm hearing, and I do share the concern, is that we're deferring a lot to the PUC and state agreements. And when we have to compete with Denver, with every other city and municipality across the state of Colorado, I am concerned that we're not going to get the solar gardens that we need, that we're not going to get the assistance that we need. And so I do think that although the PUC has some set of sides, that we should be doing this as well. And as far as the Denver Development Innovation Group, I don't feel like we understand exactly what that is going to do or how it's going to govern. And I think we are losing our leverage right now by going into this small agreement that's very narrow about the right-of-way and missing out on all of these additional things that my colleagues have brought up. That's all I have. Thank you, committee chair.
Great. Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez Gutierrez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, and thank you for reaching out, I think, to our offices to have conversations and get a little bit more information in preparation for committee. I do have a couple of questions and also agree with this need for data transparency. And obviously, like, when you get us all in a room, we hear additional things that may bring up other questions maybe that we didn't initially have. So where does the bill payment assistance funds come from? So that $5-plus million that has been paid that's on the graph, where does that money come from?
The way the PUC regulates us, it does come from our customers. That is correct.
Okay.
So the foundation dollars are from our stakeholders.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Or not stakeholders, shareholders, excuse me.
Okay. And during the last negotiation, and I think this was touched on already around what was, why there was a companion agreement, because the state did not allow ratepayers to be treated differently. Now that is no longer the case. And so at the, at the time, there was a companion agreement that allotted $2 million. Is that correct?
Over 20 years.
Over 20 years, $2 million that would go towards assistance. Over 20 years, two million dollars that would go towards assistance, energy assistance for people, for low income families or individuals. So I get that that was done at the time because the state wouldn't allow it. And so, but we did it proactively. And so that is great. We know that two million is not a lot because based on what we're seeing, the five million that has been spent in that fund. And also hearing what I've heard today, that I understand it is not also capped by the state, right? So there's no cap of how much could go towards energy assistance, correct?
Yeah, and it's eight point three million with Energy Outreach Colorado and likely more as the city, really our population grows.
Gotcha. And so I guess what I'm hearing right now, and so I guess what I'm hearing right now is that, is there, because there's no cap and it's already allowed, that is the reason that there's not a need for this companion agreement? However, what I am hearing is that some of my colleagues are asking and community members are asking for a commitment perhaps to a minimum. I don't know if that's correct or not, but like, if there's no cap, then should we have something more, you know, in writing that is committing to that energy assistance? And I'm just putting that out there as something that I wanted to just float because that's what I'm hearing from folks. And then my last question is, what is the amount that Denver will be receiving from the current agreement this, like, right now? Like, what is that total amount that we'll be receiving this year?
You mean for the franchise fees or?
The amount that Denver, yeah.
The franchise, the three percent is about thirty million dollars annually.
Okay, so it's thirty million dollars annually and that goes, money goes into where?
Just the general fund and is allocated through the budget process. So it's not earmarked for one particular program or department. It doesn't come directly back to Dottie.
Okay, and then can you, and I'm sorry, Madam Chair, one last question. Can you tell me how that percentage or how that amount was arrived at?
The three percent? Yeah, I don't have the history of the three percent.
Three percent is the typical amount that all of our franchise, in fact, I think all of our, and I know, I don't think, I know that all of our franchise municipalities have that three percent. We don't have any, it's not a larger amount in any one municipality. We have franchise agreements with over a hundred municipalities in the state of Colorado, and they're all at three percent.
And you can see that on your bill.
It is, it is actually, I'll be frank, it is on your bill, it's called out. And it's a percentage of all of our customers in the city and counties bills. So that includes electric, steam, gas, and chilled water in downtown.
And it was one of the reasons why we didn't consider, one, because that is the standard franchise fee across the other municipalities. But also increasing that would go straight to the ratepayers to pay. It would be funded by the people. So we could ask for five percent, six percent.
So increasing that amount would be paid for by the ratepayers.
By ratepayers.
By our customers.
Yeah.
So also, I think it's important to highlight that any major changes to our typical franchise that we have with over a hundred municipalities may not be approved by the Public Utilities Commission. Because they, you know, they in the end will have the final say whether or not our franchise is approved here for the city and county of Denver.
And, sorry, I know I said one less, but can you tell me then what does Excel pay for in all of this stuff? What is Excel's responsibility?
We pay millions of dollars for all of the relocation we do for public projects. So, you know, the Sixteenth Street project, we spent fourteen point nine million dollars of our own dollars to relocate our infrastructure there. I think it was gas, electric, and steam that we relocated. Every public project is the money that we spend. We also pay the city and county of Denver for right of way permits, which depending on the type of street and the length of time that we'll be closing it for maintenance for our customers here in Denver, can be millions and millions of dollars a year that go directly also into the general fund. We pay fees to DDPHE, which is, you know, public health and environment. We pay fees to community planning and development. So for any, you know, any work that we do in the city and county of Denver, we pay permit fees just like any other person working and doing business here in the city.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a quick process kind of question. So if there is a desire to have some kind of a companion agreement based on some of the feedback here, does that need to happen before it goes to full council? Like, does it need to happen before it gets past the committee stage? Like, where would that, how would that process need to go? Do you guys know?
So it's a great question. I think that there isn't an answer to that, right? So the franchise agreement, what our threshold in committee is to make a determination of whether the franchise agreement is ready to be considered by the full council so that it can either be referred to the ballot or not, right? So if you believe that it is not ready to go in front of the full council because it does not have a companion agreement that does not exist, then that is your decision.
Okay.
Right? I will say that council members making an additional request for an additional agreement that does not exist and has not been done up to this point and that wasn't requested in budget policy when they were here a couple of weeks ago and wasn't requested in any of the briefings that we've had over the last year, et cetera, that is problematic. So I would say if that is something you would like to see, I think, make the request for it. But I think in the consideration of, is this franchise agreement ready to go to the full council? The answer to that is that the franchise agreement, as has been discussed and requested, you know, while managing all requests from council members over the last year, is in front of us today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Great, Council President Sandoval.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you. I don't think negotiating is very easy. You have to figure out how you negotiate on your values and figuring out what negotiation tools you're going to be using. So I have a couple, I have a different line of questioning. In the prior franchise agreement, we had several environmental benefits called out within the 2006 franchise agreement. One of them was that Excel had agreed to contribute two hundred thousand match for a proposed solar pilot program, project program. Do you know if that was completed?
I believe so, yes.
Can we get confirmation?
Absolutely.
That would be great. It also wanted to pilot on like green building outreach program business for environmentally sustainable tomorrow program and to develop new programs during the 20 year term of the franchise. What programs are built into this franchise agreement? That, because we really did get really some really good outcomes. To your point, Shannon, that a longer franchise agreement is better for the residents of Denver. This had lots built into it. What's comparable? So if you think about the 2006 agreement and you think about what would be going in front of the voters, so just for reference, the match for the solar pilot program, it said that Excel agrees to partner with Denver on a proposed solar power plant subject to regulatory approval. The Denver Water Board reached a separate agreement that Excel had committed to, to purchase up to 22 megawatts of hydroelectric power from Denver Water over the next 20 years. In dry years, Excel shoshone plant pulls water past and reserves in the Colorado River. So there were actually really good environmental benefits, and I think that that's what you're hearing this council. And I just reviewed your slide deck again, I don't see those clearly called out. And one of the eight, like, budget priorities that we sent, when we sent a letter to the mayor, is that we have to treat global crisis, climate crisis?
Climate change.
Climate change, thank you, as an emergency. And so I think that that's something that we've had in the last two letter, in our last two budget priorities that we have come all together and that 13 of us have agreed on eight separate priorities with different buckets underneath them. And so I don't see that clearly called out. So I would be wondering if we can, if we can talk about that. And then back in the old agreement, the customer service benefits, I think they were just called out in a different way. And what I'm referencing is the Colorado Independent did an article of the old franchise agreement, and they broke it down into these specific buckets, and it talked about the customer service benefits. Even like the Excel would partner with the city and Denver Housing Authority and the governor's office on a low income residential demand side management pilot program. So I think that that's what you're hearing from us, and that's what you're hearing from the public comment today, is what are the benefits? I understand, I feel like the slide deck was based on the economic benefits of how the economic benefits go into our general fund with the three percent. I think we're all clear on that. That's what the franchise agreement is. And this is when negotiation comes challenging. There can be an and. Besides the economic benefit, and what are the environmental benefits? And what are the customer service benefits? And I just don't feel like that in the current slide deck, that is not clearly delineated. And those were where my questions were derived from.
I wonder if I could defer to Liz Babcock, who it looks like is here, to talk a little bit about some of the environmental work in the relationship with Excel and what CASR is doing to forward that. I don't want to speak for CASR, frankly.
Good afternoon, Liz Babcock with the Climate Office. With regard to the agreement, I think we're still working on the D-Dig, correct? So I can't speak to that. But I would say that we have had over the last five years a partnership with Excel under the Energy Future Collaboration where we've worked with them to advance our climate and energy, clean energy goals. So that's included things like working together to try to advance various pilot programs, data sharing to decarbonize, for example, the gas sector, looking at, you know, neighborhood electrification pilots. And so I think we've had some really successful work we've done the last, you know, five years together. I think the other thing that's important to know, since the last agreement was negotiated, is that the state has taken a very aggressive approach towards climate goals and requirements on investment utilities, which includes Excel. So they have to meet pretty ambitious decarbonization goals for the electric sector. The current plan that's approved for Excel is 80 to 85 percent emissions reduction by 2030. And so we've seen a lot of improvement there. I think one of the things we're most excited about in the agreement, in the D-Dig agreement, would be working on the ambient loop, so we're decarbonizing the gas sector because that's not something that we're seeing much progress on to date. And so it's really important for us to partner on that. And I think there's also an opportunity to look more at how we're working together on more data sharing, how we're meeting demand as we see a lot of new growth in the city. So new growth of housing, electrification is also increasing demand. So I think that is really the key part of, kind of the next part of the work that we're going to do together. But we've had some successful work that we've done under the Energy Future Collaboration. And I'd be happy to share a link to the website and the work plans that we've developed over the last five plus years under that program.
So thank you. I, thank you for that work. I think it is, we didn't have the office of CASR when this last agreement came out. So I think we've made great strides in that realm. My question back to the people who have been negotiating the agreement, what is within the agreement? That, what Liz just spelled out is separate from the agreement on things that we have, a prior administration had come in, developed the Office of CASR, and have been working on. My question is back, what's in the agreement? Because as it's late stated in the Colorado Independent, as it's stated in the Denver Post, as it's stated in the Rocky Mountain News, if you do research on this and you compare articles, it clearly delineates what's in the agreement. And so besides the economic benefit, can you please tell us what's in the agreement outside of the economic benefit? And I'm not saying, I don't want to downplay the economic benefit in a time where we're thinking about fifty million dollars worth of budget cuts and 200 million in 2026. I think this council, like, said that, as somebody who will have to balance the budget and approve a balanced budget, I think that's weighing heavily on us. So I'm not trying to underscore that. It's an and. So what is in the current agreement that could match what we had in 2026? Because the articles in 2026, this was not a breeze. This was not a walk in the park. This was very controversial, and there's lots of articles if you dig them up.
I don't want you to be angry at me for not, like, directly answering that question. So I'm worried, I don't want to annoy you. But I'll just say that in 2006, there was no sort of broader state NPUC effort or federal effort to decarbonize. There was anything like what is going on now. And so, you know, in 2006, you had to try to stuff things like this into the franchise agreement because there was nothing else going on. In the meantime, you have had like state requirements for decarbonization and beneficial electrification, state, federal, municipal. And again, I think Liz can sort of speak to this more articulately than I can. But the advice that we sort of started off with as a negotiation team is the advice that Grace Rink put in her transition memo to Mayor Johnston, just saying, you know, the franchise agreement isn't where we're going to get this done. We're going to get the kinds of things that we want to do to build on what the commitments have already been made in state statute and in Public Utilities Commission processes. And at this point, the city, through CASR, representatives intervene in almost all of the Public Utility Commission's hearings to sort of advance those goals. And our lawyers have also sort of advised us, like, these are things that you can achieve better through state statute and through the Public Utilities Commission than you can in some sort of independent, smaller agreement. And I guess, again, I would sort of look to Chuck Solomon and to Liz Babcock to expand on those points. So I'm kind of in a position of taking advice from people who are much more knowledgeable about it than I am.
I guess what? I'll wrap it up, this will be my last comment. Currently, right now, what I'm living in as an elected official is a time of not trust. We are coming from a place where voters are not trusting their government. And it's not something that I don't think any of us have done. I don't think I have gotten elected in 2019 and gone out and not worked tirelessly on behalf of my residents in Northwest Denver and the residents of Denver. But I am living in the reality that there is this sentiment that government does not produce. And so what you're hearing is that sentiment from this body that this does not, is not producing because we are leaning on other state statutes that we don't have control over and federal statutes that could go away. And so with that, of thinking of our rights in my life, having had gone away, that I grew up with more rights than my daughter currently has right now, that some people have right now, how are we taking that into consideration? Because a lot of people are very frustrated with government. And so what we're doing right now is we're trying to combat that and produce better outcomes. And what I hear you all saying is we're relying on state statutes that could change. We're relying on federal bills that could change. We just saw one pass that will literally change the outcome of generations before me and after me, my family, my kids. And so I don't feel comfortable, had 20 years ago, do we felt, was there a different sentiment where we felt comfortable? Maybe relying on state statutes and other things. But that's what I keep hearing you say, is that these state statutes are setting the precedent and setting the pathway for Denver to follow. And I'm saying those can change. And so without this being codified somehow in an Excel franchise agreement at the city and county of Denver, without having a minimum, knowing full well that those could change within 20 years, I would have never thought some of the things that federal government would have changed in my lifetime. Really, honestly, I would never have thought that. Would have never thought that the Supreme Court would have done some of the rulings that just came down in my lifetime that will have grave impacts on our residents. How are we giving the trust of the voters without saying we're relying on another separate branch of government to set the precedent? without saying we're relying on another separate branch of government to set the precedent? I would not be saying this years ago or feeling it. It's different now. And I think every single person in this room is nodding their head because we're living through that. And it's, I never thought I would say unprecedented time after COVID. I mean, like, literally, I think I said unprecedented every single day of COVID. And now here I am again, saying unprecedented time again in my lifetime. And it's even scarier a little bit because these are rights of my kids and my family and my generations after me. And so maybe that's just a bigger framing of what I'm thinking about and how I'm thinking about the work that I'm doing as one elected person in the city and county of Denver, sitting on a body of really brilliant other electeds. How are we building trust within our community when it's so fragile? And I feel like this is one of those pieces where people don't understand this. Like Councilwoman Abilah said, people, there was this missed opportunity to bring people in and co-create, as Councilwoman Lewis says all the time, co-create things with each other. I just don't know how we get through that. And so if you have that in the agreement, and I'm not reading it clearly and I'm not seeing it clearly, I will do my homework and try to figure it out, to pocket it more. I just didn't see that in this presentation, and I haven't felt that from the consensus of this body. So I'm just trying to say things that I'm living in my really, like, lived experience of being a council president right now, in a time where there's just not a lot of trust with electeds, and I do everything in my power to be trustworthy, honor my word, and represent the city and county of Denver that I love with every fiber of my being, and like, I would do anything for the residents of Denver. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. I have a question about, we have one other franchise agreement in the city and county of Denver, right? Comcast.
We had one, I don't, is it current?
Yes, Comcast. We have one other franchise agreement and it's with Comcast. Yeah. So I'm just curious, because I think everything that my fellow council members have said is valid, but I don't, there is a disconnect for me because we just approved the Comcast franchise agreement, and we didn't have any of these conversations about the Comcast franchise agreement. So I'm sort of like trying to understand what is different about the Comcast franchise agreement and the Excel franchise agreement? Because we're holding two similar companies to totally different standards. Can you clarify that for me a little bit?
I don't have the detail around, Chris, do you have any detail around Comcast franchise or its makeup?
I'm going to actually call in John McGrath. Please, we're chucks.
Chuck Solomon with the City Attorney's Office. I think we're talking kind of apples and oranges or we're talking about the different franchise agreements.
Okay.
With Comcast, we're talking about cable TV, which isn't emitting emissions like gas, electric, steam, chilled water, which we're dealing with here with Excel Energy. And that's why we're looking at two different scenarios. So that's why you don't have environmental matters covered in the Comcast.
Okay, so can you just explain to me then? Because the Comcast agreement is a right-of-way agreement. The Excel agreement is a right-of-way agreement.
Correct.
And so you say apples and oranges because of the impact?
Yes.
Because of the impact, right? But it's not apples and oranges in terms of the legal language of the contracts. They're both right-of-way agreements.
Yes, they are.
And they both allow a monopoly utility in the city of Denver to access our right-of-way?
Well, they don't allow a monopoly. They're both allow for competition in the agreement.
Right, they allow for competition, but there is no competition. We don't have another cable provider that has a right-of-way agreement with us. We don't have another electric provider that has a right-of-way agreement with us. So for all intents and purposes, they are both monopolies in our city?
Sure. I would, I guess, put a finer point on the Comcast. While we don't have another cable TV, we do have other television service providers through internet. And they have a statewide franchise agreement in the city.
So they have a statewide franchise agreement?
Correct.
So that is managed at the state level?
Yes, it is.
So we have no control over what happens at this state? Okay, so that's exactly what we were just talking about with the concern about Excel because there are state statutes that manage that.
Exactly. And I think to put a finer point on what's kind of been discussed already, is we have a constitutional provision that sets up the Public Utilities Commission and what they regulate, and that would be the gas, the electric, the steam, their terms of service, their rates of service. So you're right, it is covered in a certain area. The PUC has preeminence on. The city has preeminence in the right-of-way itself. And that's kind of where the fine line is between the two. Because if you look at the 2006 agreement, I've heard a lot about, we had various pilot programs, which we did, but they were all subject to PUC approval because that is in the PUC's domain.
Got it.
Each of those programs did go forward, and they were done. I'm familiar with it because I helped negotiate that agreement.
By the grace of the PUC?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically.
Got it.
And today, we are active at the PUC, and we're participating in all those pilot programs. The thermal loop, the ambient stuff, battery storage, all of those things set in statute, which is the domain of the PUC. We do participate in those things.
Okay, so can I just say back to you what I think you said to me so that I can make sure that I'm kind of clarified here? Thank you. So I think you said to me, the world is a very different place than it was in 2006.
Yes.
And as a result, this agreement only manages our right-of-way because there are so many other places that all of these other issues are managed.
Correct.
Awesome, okay, thank you very much. So then, I don't know if you want to answer this question, or Shannon, if you want to answer this question. But so then, back to my initial question, which is, I don't understand why we are treating this any differently from our Comcast franchise agreement. This is a right-of-way agreement.
It doesn't have to go to the voters. They don't pay us. There's sort of...
Comcast pays us.
What?
Comcast pays us in the franchise agreement.
Yeah, there's franchise.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought they didn't.
No, they do. Okay, I'm going to take that silence to being that there is not an answer to my question.
I don't know the answer to your question.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I'm not familiar.
I don't understand what your question is.
I'm asking why we are treating two right-of-way franchise agreements differently.
In many respects, they're treated almost identically in terms of you have to get permits. If you're on our right-of-way, you have to move if we have a public project. They're very similar in a lot of respects, but they are different types of utilities.
And if anything, the iteration of the negotiated draft moves it closer because it takes out some of those other things to check's point and has them dealt with in their appropriate places that didn't exist in 2006. So I think this is what you're getting at. They didn't have a place in 2006, we stuffed them in here. But now we don't need to use this agreement to leverage those things because they have other places where they have active conversations and active engagement, and they are real. This can now go back to being a right-of-way agreement, which is what it was designed to be in the first place.
Got it. Okay, really appreciate that clarification. I think that helps me a lot. Seeing no other questions, and we've got about five minutes left. So this is 922 and 987, moving, do we want to move them as a block? Or do we want to move them separately? That is my first question of council members. I would like to move them as a block.
Block.
Block, great, okay. So I will need a motion and a second. Moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilwoman Pro Tem Romero Campbell. Sorry, Cashman, she got me at the same time, but she's closer to me.
Take third.
Okay, totally fair. Do we need a roll call vote? Doesn't look like we need a roll call vote on this. So great, thank you very much. We will move this through to the full council, and we will see you on the floor. We have seven items on consent for today. No one has called them off, so with that, we are adjourned. Thanks for joining us.